I'd like to start, call the August 23 meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, section 20, and the legislature's extension of that order, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via live stream at youtube.com/dartmouthcommunitymedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV channels nine and 18 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. With that, I will have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Genthor. Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
Mary Waite?
Here.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Here.
John Noons?
Yep.
Chris Oliver. All right, thank you. So, the first item on our agenda is public comment. I know we've been receiving emails to Ms. Genthor indirectly to us. All of those emails that did not come to us that came to Ms. Genthor have been forwarded to us. I would also invite anyone who would like to comment about any of the items that are on our agenda to forward your comments to msgenther@dartmouthschools.org. Ms. Genthor, do we have any emails that we've received since the start of the meeting?
We have not.
Okay. I will come back around at the end of the meeting to see if we have received any other comments. I welcome the public to go ahead and send those emails if they would like to comment. Moving to the next item on our agenda, we have approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of July 26, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Waite. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of August 10, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Ms. Ammaral, a second by Ms. Waite. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Madam Chair, I will abstain. And just for the record, so everyone knows, I was not on vacation.
Oh, I apologize.
I was at UMass Amherst.
He was at a work conference.
At a conference for my certification, so I was not in Bora Bora or Tahiti.
So, one, I apologize for that mistake, but two, I will say, if you had been on vacation, it would have been a well-earned vacation, and I hope you get to take one soon. All right, so, we have three in favor and one abstention on the August 10 minutes. The next item on the agenda is old business. We have an update on return to school, including masks and the test and stay program. Dr. Gifford, I will turn it over to you.
Alrighty, thank you. So, as everyone knows, even though Dartmouth did already say that we were going to maintain our mask protocol, the commission also is looking for authorization to mandate masks for K through 12 schools, all staff, et cetera, and that will be tomorrow at the Board of Education meeting. There's, I would imagine, no chance that that wouldn't pass the Board of Ed. So, as we remember, it was until October 1, at least, and there'll be some metrics developed. And he did mention the idea that perhaps it would be, you know, 80% vaccination rate in a school, that you could then go ahead and remove the mask mandate. There's also talk of a possibility of including a percentage of positive cases within that metric, so we'll see more on that. So, as of now, everyone will be wearing their masks while in their school buildings. The buildings have been getting ready for opening. We will maintain our normal cleaning protocol, sanitizing, et cetera, et cetera. There will be no social distancing. We are trying to, with the best of our ability, to maintain around 2 to 3 feet at lunch. Some of the chairs are staying in place like they were last year, et cetera, so we're working on that. But, again, we just expect everyone to try to live, if you will, within the regulations. Bus transportation, mask must be worn, windows will remain open. Mr. Kylie's been working, of course, with Tremblay's Bus to make sure that happens. So, we're assuming that will happen, because there will be, according to the guidance, the contact tracing is not for the buses this year, so we'll see how that goes. With that said, we did put our application, oh, it's not really an application, it's just our interest, letter of interest, for the testing programs that are being offered through DESI in partnership with the CIC Health Organization. We talked to Mr. Michio about this before even making our decision, after the webinars. It looked promising, and he felt it was promising as well. So, what we did, we put our application in, obviously, bing bang boom, it was accepted immediately. So, they're promising the sky, we have to say, and we're not sure if the sky, it will happen. We'll see, because we put in for that they would have onsite coordinators, people to help us with that, because, and then I'll explain what the various testing programs are that we're looking at. You know, we met with our nurses as well, and if we do not get, we think, if we don't get the service or the help, we're not sure how we could possibly administer this testing program. But, we're doing all we can to keep kids and students and staff safe, so we put in for it. So, I'll explain the two things that we're very interested in definitely planning on doing, the symptomatic testing, and that is for when individuals present symptoms at school. They obviously don't come to school if they're sick, and I'll go over some of those new, how they updated the symptoms as well. That's Chris, I'm just, Mr. Oliver, just seeing what he says. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. And, so, it'd be the normal shallow nasal swab. Actually, Mr. Kylie and I tried it with Mr. Michio. It's just a little, almost a cardboard, they do that, and then it registers either positive or negative within 15 minutes. The binax now. So, that would be symptoms, they would do that, and it means you go home if it's particular symptoms, and I will go over those. Then, if, the close contact testing, and that's for folks not vaccinated, and again, I don't even want to go through all of them, because, I'll tell you, there's pages and pages of responses, but in general, this is in general. Same thing, so if someone is a close contact, determined to be a close contact, they can do this testing for, we would say, seven days. It said at least five, Mr. Michio's recommending seven days. So, every day they would come to school, they'd have their test. If it remains negative, they can stay in school. It's the purpose of trying to keep kids in school and not have to quarantine needlessly. The one that we're not set on just yet is what they called the pool testing last year. We are still considering that, and we'll see how it goes. The difference this year, what they're doing, is last year you would have to, it would be in the pool of 10 samples in one, I'll call it a vial, if you will, and it goes to a lab. If that then was positive, they would have to retest the 10 folks that were in that vial. Supposedly now, the new, the update is that when they do the testing, they would keep individual ones as well. So, it goes to a lab, and if that pool becomes positive, they have the other 10 individual samples, and they can determine exactly who's positive, and then they would let the school know. That whole piece, we're not sure about yet, because it is random testing, and it says maybe every week, you know, so we haven't really vetted that out yet. Obviously, none of this can happen for a student unless a parent gives permission, so we were actually looking at our permission slips yesterday, today. I was just starting to get those ready to go. I want, we want to see if we can do them electronically, that people would sign off. The permission slip would include all three testing options, because if a district decides throughout the year that you want to go ahead and engage in a different one, the parent has already given permission for all three. But, we would then let them know, we are now starting to, let's say it's the pooled, pooled one, which we're not sure about yet. So, people would be kept in the know whether we were going ahead and go ahead and do that. What am I missing, Mr. Kylie?
Just, you know, just to remind people in terms of air filtration, we talked a little bit about what we're continuing to do. We'll be continuing to have air purifiers in every classroom and in most adult spaces throughout the building, so there's one right over there. And we have 521 deployed throughout the, throughout the district. So, we could be continuing to use those and encourage hand hy, good hand hygiene and support the schools in every way that we can with PPE and materials that they need, so.
That's kind of it in a nutshell, if you have any questions, of course, but we're ready to go.
Questions? Mr. Noons, you're good?
Good.
Ms. Waite?
I do, so, just a few. So, when we, you know, the students, the parents, well, let me step back. Parents have signed off in the beginning of the year, will they be notified if then again, you know, they're, so they've signed their permission, but will they be notified that day if their child was tested? How, you know, what will happen?
Well, again, so the pool testing would be, we're not even sure how we might, so let's put that one aside right now, but the test and stay, they would know that they are in a tested, we call them this test and stay mode, if you will. One of the things that we're going to, we will want to have happen is that child will not be allowed to be on the bus, so it would have to be a parent transport, because to know that this child was a close contact and could possibly then be positive, it kind of defeats that purpose, so that would be a piece. The parent's only other option of not including their child in a test and stay program is to do the quarantining.
Okay.
And so, again, we're just trying to keep kids in school.
Okay, and then I guess, you know, just, I know, just going back to some, you know, parent comments and questions around all this, if, you know, we have a student who does become ill, you know, last year, of course, we had the ability to bring in the, you know, the students could be virtual and come in, what is, what do you think will be the plan for those children this year who will have to be home because they're symptomatic, or, you know, just, or they're test positive but are asymptomatic and have to be at home?
Actually, that's in the new FAQ, there is no remote learning.
Yep.
So, and it will not count, et cetera. What I've asked the schools to do is just like any other year with illnesses, chickenpox or something, and you'll be hearing from that when they do their school improvement plans, they are going to develop their strategies for supporting kids that have to be out on quarantine or whatever it might be. And again, that might be tutoring sessions, you know, the elementary especially did a nice job last year by just offering different services, and as you recall, the middle school did those after, after-school programs of teachers having that option, so, but as far as remoting into a classroom.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so you'll be hearing more about the strategies come the end of the next, the end of the month, it should be the middle and high school presenting, and then the elementary next.
Okay, that's helpful, just in front of response, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And let me just back up, so, just one of the things that, the definition of a close contact will remain the same this year, the six feet, 15 minutes in total, blah, 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 without masks, and all, you know, all of those different things, but how we're responding to it, as I said, is very different with all of these different, it's a whole, as it was before, if this, then that kind of thing, you know, so we'll be, we're working with the nurses and Ms. Jodwin now to kind of make it a little simpler, so folks can understand. But, to remind people, I'll just read through the list, these, these ones in bold, and they included cough as standalone symptoms, so I'll just say that if you have these symptoms, the nurses would also be able to make a better determination on when to do what, right? Last year, they were just kind of this back and forth of the combination of symptoms, et cetera. So, standalones, obviously, it's a fever, 100 or higher, chills or shaking chills, and again, this is all in the DESI updates, difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, I hate to see any of that happening, new loss of taste or smell, and muscle aches or body aches, and then a cough not due to something that you might know of, you have asthma or something. So, but the other ones, sore throat, nausea, vomiting, et cetera, those are all in combination with other symptoms. So, just folks know, there are, there are a lot of responses that will be following protocols, if you're vaccinated, not vaccinated, et cetera. And I just wanted to make a note, which I was just telling Dr. Jenkins, the Needham Public School, Public Health Office has been working to continue to update all the local communities in the, in town of who's been vaccinated. As of July 29, the 12 to 15 population in Dartmouth was 44% vaccinated, and the 16 to 19 was only 29% vaccinated. So, even if we got the 80% vaccination all clear, let's take the masks off, we're not there yet.
Long way to go.
Long way to go, you know, and again, that was July 29, so. Yeah.
Right. That's not that long ago.
No.
No.
No, that's.
No.
For my people.
Ms. Waite, go ahead.
Again, just like one other, I mean, just going back through these parent, you know, comments that we've gotten and questions is, you know, I felt like, you know, last year, certainly nurses are, they're great about working with parents and families, and certainly more than reasonable, I had parents who just wrote and said, well, will we be, you know, constrained to the same, we're going to get a note saying your child's missed X amount of days with 10 days, I've, you know, my gut says that they, they could be generous around that, given the circumstances, but I think I'd go back to you and just, just to answer that question.
Yeah, but you're right, and we've, we talked about that actually with our nurse meeting last week, and we're going to talk through that a little bit more. You know, and I know probably the most, the parents that really worry the most are those that are going to Voke, you know, with the eighth grade absenteeism, or even the high school that are moving on, it, I can understand the concern, so we're going to be talking about our practices and protocols on that.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, it is a state mandate that at a certain number of days, a letter must be sent.
Right, right.
So, we have to send the letter, because we have to comply with the state mandate.
Yeah, that's the tricky part.
We need to leave from the state, state on that, if we're not going to send letters.
Right.
That having been said, if you get a letter, I think the administrators are always great, and though, if you call them up, they'll say, we understand, they were out for COVID, we're working with it.
Yeah.
They're not going to come down and.
Exactly, exactly.
But, people will get letters if they miss that, because we have to comply with the state regulation on that.
That's fine, but.
Thank you. So, that's.
Again, it comes down to using common sense.
Right, right.
You know, if, if your child wakes up in the morning and doesn't feel good.
Keep them home.
Home.
Keep them home.
Load them up on Advil or Tylenol and send them, because when it wears off, it's all over, so.
Ms. Ammaral, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Noons, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, very good.
All right, if there are no further questions on the update on the return to school, I'd like to move, under old business, the authorization to release executive session minutes from Mr. Noons, I know you had some questions, so do you want to make a motion to reflect what your questions are?
Sure. That's fine. Madam Chair, make a motion that we release the exec, executive session minutes of 2019 for the following dates, May 13, June 10, July 8, September 9, September 25, October 7, and November 18, and December 16, all of the year 2019. All others, please hold.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Ammaral. We're obviously not going to discuss why Mr. Noons wants to hold them, because they're executive session minutes.
Yep.
And so, that, part of that discussion aside, is there any other discussion on the motion? That's fine with me, I will say, Mr. Noons, I will defer to your, your concerns on this, and this seems fine to me.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda under old business is the report on ESR grant funds. Mr. Kylie?
Okay, so, I shared with you a spreadsheet that has a lot of, a lot of information on it. So, we have been, just recently, been approved for our SR2 grant, which is $1,271,000. We also are prepared, preparing, I should say, to apply for the ESR3 grant, which is This spreadsheet talks about, depicts how we're going to focus our efforts. There's a few things with ESR2 and ESR3 that we need to address. ESR2, these different legis, these different pieces of legislation come with different strings attached. So, ESR2 requires monies spent on social and emotional health of students, and ESR3 requires monies be spent on learning loss and the effects of the pandemic. So, unfortunately, those are very realistic, easy things to spend money on, because we know we're going to have issues with those, and we've identified here some ways that we're going to focus our efforts and support students through the next three years. So, the ESR3 monies will go through the end of, actually, they'll go through September 30 of 2024, so past the end of the, the '24 school year. The ESR2 monies will run out in the 20, September 30, '23, but what we've done is put a plan together of how we would spend the bulk of those funds. We also want to be, and we've been saying this all along, we want to be flexible. This is going to be a process that will be a learning process for us and our staff as we work with kids and identify needs along the way, and we want to be nimble enough and flexible enough to respond to those. So, not every dollar of ESR3 is allocated at this point in this plan, but the ways that we're going to focus our efforts are on social and emotional supports, learning loss, the individual needs of students, and, you know, we're going to do that through a number of, number of different ways. Some are staff-related and some aren't. Social workers and adjustment counselors, reading specialists, instructional technology specialists, a nurse, special education, teachers and team facilitators, teacher assistants, after-school programs, professional development, special ed services, instructional materials, materials for staff that are related to their professional development, and, and technology. So, we have a broad plan, we're certainly touching a lot of different areas, and we've done this collaborating with the schools and talking about how we can support them and, and in their mission to support the kids. So, there's concerns with this. The great part is that these funds are available, we're going to be able to support kids with these monies. The downside is that they are going to go away, and there's, in my mind, no way that we're going to be able to maintain this. But, that's the intent of the funds. The intent of the fund is, funds is to address this, the results of this pandemic, and, and the deficiencies that, you know, in learning and, and the supports that are needed. So, that's the intent of it, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to have to be very strategic as we move through this process, so that we try and minimize that cliff at the end as best we can, but there is no way that we can eliminate that cliff. It's not going to happen. So, we are not unlike any other school district in that regard. There is no way that you can buy materials with this that are going to be around for 10 years, and, you know, it's, it's too much money. So, the only way that you can, you know, and, and let's face it, we're people, you know, we're a people business, and that's what we do well, and we have great people, and we're going to have some more great people over the next few years to help kids, but, so that's, that's our, that's our focus with these funds. With ESR3, there's an extensive process of, of meeting with stakeholder groups and talking about, you know, how, what our plan is, and what, what, you know, they see as, as needs that, you know, we may not be addressing, or we may be addressing, hopefully, with, with some of these funds. So, we're in that process still. October, we have to file that for the, that application, so we're, it comes quick, and, but we're in the midst of that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
You're welcome.
I do have to say, you know, it does make me nervous to see so many recurring revenues, right, expenditures on a, a non-recurring revenue source, but, I mean, I think your point is important, that we can't remedy learning loss or social, emotional needs of our kids without people. It requires people, and that's just the only way we're going to do that. So, I hope also that we can work with the town a little bit. Many meetings back, I made a comment that it's hard sometimes, because we have to put forward requests for people in chunks, right? It's one person or two people, right? We can't plan over multiple years, but this seems to me that it would be good to work with the town to maybe request a little less in the next few years, and the town can sort of bank a little of that maybe, so that some of these positions are, in fact, really quite necessary, not just now, but moving forward to do that, and I think that might be helpful for us to sort of explore some multi-year planning with them, to mitigate the effects of this cliff as much as possible. That having been said, I understand why we need these people. Other comments, questions? Mr. Noons?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this, Mr. Kylie. I'm going to make an assumption that this is going to be a work in pro, in process, and this is not something that we're going to go out and chisel in stone because of the way things are, that it'll, you know, like New England weather, wait five minutes, it'll change, type of, type of deal, but, that being said, in all seriousness, you know, to take care of, you know, the social and emotional needs of our students, you know, we've all talked about that over the past almost two years now, 18 months, and then other things that we can do, you know, between after-school programs and writing training and, you know, transportation for after-school programs, it's, it's great. Yeah, is it a, you know, I mean, if you think about it, you're, over the, over the long haul, you're putting, you know, you know, $4.2 million into, into a budget, you know, via grants and that type of deal, we'll have to cross that bridge down the line as to how we've, how we handle it and how we've, you know, I mean, I, for one, and this is, this is my, my thoughts, is we continue with our own regular budgeting, and this is above and beyond type of, type of deal, so, but, well done, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Ammaral? So, just, thank you for this. Thank everyone for all of your hard work with all of this, all of these moving pieces. I don't know if you could speak to down toward, one, two, three, well, special ed teacher facilitator? Of course, you know, I understand the facilitator position, but in the way that it's worded, is it like a split position, or?
No, why we put, excuse me, um, teacher, we wanted people to know.
Qualification?
Was a teacher to start off with, that, you know, so, but their, their role will be as a facilitator.
Okay.
Yeah, just what you're thinking, a facilitator. And why that came about was after meeting with Beth and Lori Jodwin, and just looking at the number of team meetings that go on, and these two schools in particular.
Okay.
We felt it was a real necessity to be able to take the load off some of the folks that are in there already, and be able to devote more time to other things, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's just what you're thinking.
Yeah, and I was making, I was making that assumption, using John's word, assuming that, like you said, when it's about social, emotional being, is taking those people, you know, away from the duties that they could be working on, some social, emotional pieces with those.
Yes.
You know, those meetings. And then you answered my second question. I was curious as to why just those two versus, I was just sort of theoretically thinking the middle and high school and all the other diff, but it's the numbers, it's the numbers.
It's the sheer numbers, yeah, and the need, and of course, with our, especially that Cushman, as you probably know, we have more and more students in, that need assessments and evaluations, like, over the top.
Yeah, yeah.
I think with the year that we've had, it's going to be even more.
Of course, of course, yeah. Thank you, I, that's all I have.
Ms. Waite?
Yeah, I just want to say again, like, thank you for the tremendous amount of work that, you know, you put into this, and I'm so relieved that we at least have this to help us bridge this time. I mean, I can't even imagine, you know, with everything that we have in front of us, and, you know, a lot of the. and, you know, a lot of the unknowns. Are you already employing some of this, you know, I know as we're kind of going through the grants, like, what is that process looking like? Because I would imagine a lot of other schools are trying to find the same, you know, staff, and we're, you know, in a fairly competitive, you know, field for that, so.
Right, right. We are. The one we've had a real hard time, again, is our SLPs.
Is what?
The SLPs, that department. We thought we were, we took, what did we say, like, three steps ahead and then two steps back and kind of thing. So we are struggling trying to get enough folks to fill that, that position. But the nurse was on board this past year. We hired her as a one-year to help with the COVID issues, and then thankfully, we're able to keep her because it was really very important that we had that extra support. So, yeah, we are, we're moving on some of these. Even, even TAs trying to fill TA positions has been a little tricky, the number of candidates we're getting, so it's kind of hard. So we're still in the process of filling, but, you know, we thought we were kind of done for a while. Just ask Kate. She'll get a resignation, a retirement, and so.
Have you filled those high school positions that I know that you were looking into, the physics and the?
We still had people reject the physics job, to be honest, but we just had someone call today and say, is it still opening? So, still open, so we'll see what happens. We do have a little backup plan Ross has been working on, shuffling folks and seeing how we might be able to fill that need within. The LMC right here, we just had a recommendation for that position just today with signing papers on that, so.
Oh, great.
That should be good, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you both.
You're welcome.
Again, so much work. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so moving on to new business. Dr. Gifford, I'm going to ask, did you get a text from Mr. Oliver that he's on his way?
Yes.
No. No, he's unable to make it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me see what.
Right.
I didn't want to look rude.
I was going to skip the, the meeting dates if he was on his way because it doesn't make sense.
Nope, he's not, he can't.
He's unable to be here.
He's apologizing, he missed up his schedule, so.
Okay. So he's unable to be here. Do we want to discuss the, these meeting dates? That's the next item under new business. And then we can have Ms. Genthler follow up with Mr. Oliver to see if those work for him?
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay.
I mean, these work.
All right.
These work for me.
Same.
Okay.
I believe these work for me. My only question is Monday, October 11th, I might not be able to make that.
That's Columbus Day, when I'm meeting.
Yeah. Oh, you just put it in there, okay.
Just to note it.
I thought it was a meeting.
No.
I'm not sure I'm going to be here.
Right.
All right, now I get that's why we're not meeting on that date. Understood, all right. So then we already have set up September 13th, September 27th.
Yeah.
I'm just saying these out loud so the public watching can hear them. In October, we would meet Monday, October 18th. In November, that would be November 1st, and November 15th. And in December, it would be December 13th. That works for everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Amaral.
Just to clarify, Madam Chair, 6:30 start time for those.
Yes, during the school year, we start at 6:30.
Thank you.
This is our last summer meeting, so.
And then we have September 29th, we've got a workshop.
A work, yeah, a workshop with MASC.
Yeah.
All right, so we don't need a motion on that, so that's fine. So the next item on the agenda is the authorization to release the executive session minutes for 2020. Mr. Noons, I know you said you had some things you wanted to hold for 2019. Are there any?
2020, I'm fine.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion?
Sure, Madam, make a motion, we release the executive session minutes from 2020 as noted in the agenda. Do you want me to read them?
No, that's fine. I think that's okay.
But as noted in the agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, so a motion by Mr. Noons, we'll go Ms. Amaral for the second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Dr. Gifford, time for your superintendent's update.
And Mr. Oliver just texted again that those dates work for him.
Okay, good.
So he's listening somewhere. Okay, just a couple of things. Let's see, as you know, we've been holding the Accelerated Academy, the Accelerated Learning Academy, the last two weeks, and we had about 108 students that have been involved with K through 2 from all the elementary schools, and then 11 teachers, a literacy coach, two teaching assistants. And two weeks of that, and it's been wonderful, the teaching that's going on. Ms. Olivera said she walked through a couple of times and just really, really pleased with what's going on. Project Time was this week as well, so we had all our new, except those that are still being hired in their introductory meeting, and a lot of us came and were able to meet them and say hello and kind of chat for a little bit. And we had presenters from across the district. They learn all the little things, Teach Point, Rubicon, Atlas, Aspen, all the fun stuff, and kind of learn about Dartmouth. On September 8th, I think it was the 8th, the policy subcommittee meeting we were holding, just to let folks know, we're going to try to address three policies that day, the harassment, just, we need a couple of little updates to that. The naming of sections of facilities, we want to make sure we have that policy in place because, as you know, we've had a couple of requests on that. And also, Mr. Kylie and I met with Mr. Tattlebaum recently, and they were just asking if there could be some kind of clarification on use of the turf field for especially some of the rec groups, et cetera. So if we could, we're looking to update that policy, procedure and protocols. I mean, we've been, you know, Mr. Kylie always tries to help groups that want to use it, but as you know, we use it like crazy too, between the band program, all of the sports that we have. So we'd like to look at a turf field use policy and procedure, and just to try to, try to help our, our partners, our recreation partners, be able to use the, use the field a little bit more. Let's see, and you know, I want to check this with you, Ms. Kylie, I forgot today, the September 11th at the field, is that still on? I thought I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a conflict of some sort.
There was.
Okay, but you fixed it.
Yep.
Good. So the Dartmouth Veteran Advisory Board will be holding a memorial, a celebration, if you will, of the September 20th, the anniversary of September 11th, a memorial, actually. And that will be at 11 o'clock on September 11th at the Memorial Field. And I already spoke about this, and I already spoke about that, and I think that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Gifford?
No.
Okay, so my turn to report of the chair. The Equality and Diversity Subcommittee met, and I just want to keep everyone updated on where we are and what we're going. We are not able to connect with Mr. Ventura and Mr. Pereira for the meeting on the 18th, and so I have reached out for them. We're going to try it the opposite way. We're going to have them give us a date, and then I'll schedule a meeting around the date to present. So I think that might work better because we set the date and it didn't work for them and then, so we're going to look to have a presentation from them at, I asked them for some dates in the last three weeks of September, and then we'll try to arrange for the committee to hear from them on that date. So I will let you know when and if I hear back from them and we have a date settled on that. The second thing it has under the report of the chair is that we said at our last meeting that we would not have physical access to our school committee meetings, but that we would revisit that decision every meeting. And so that's why I have it here, because I want to open it up for you. I know we've been having a lot of comments and emails. I will reiterate, every email that comes to Ms. Genthler is forwarded to us, so we do see all public comment, all of us do. It is also available, it's a matter of public record, because it is emailed to us as public officials. So we are getting that information. I personally, given rising cases in the start of the school year, I'm not quite ready to open meetings to the public at this point, but this is not my decision, this is a decision of the committee. So I will take input from anyone at this point, if they'd like to comment.
Why does everybody look at me?
Look at him this way.
No, I'm good, I'm fine. I'm fine, no, I'm kidding. Seriously, and I'll get to the public comment part after. As far as trying to, again, open these meetings, you know, to the public, I don't think we should at this point in time. I mean, again, all you had to do was, you know, you've got what Dr. Gifford had from, you know, the Needham Health Director, that, you know, the statistics that he had there. Also too, if you take a look in the Standard Times this morning, where Southeastern Massachusetts, not only the town of Dartmouth, but Southeastern Massachusetts, what's going on with the, the rise in COVID cases and everything else, whether you're, I mean, unfortunately, even people that are vaccinated are coming down with this variant, not as bad, thank God, but they're coming down with it. So I think, you know, err on the side of caution at this point in time, you know, for another month anyway, is, is fine. Again, it's like the masks, you know? Maybe somewhere down the line, you know, we'll end up with 100% vac, you know, vaccination, and we'll be good to, nobody, nobody will need to wear one. But at this point in time, I think it would behoove us, no disrespect, I'd love to see people here type of deal, but just, you know, ounce of prevention, pound of cure.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Ms. Amaral or Ms. Wade?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, it's, it's not the time to be having people live here. I, I do wish that we had a better way to sort of, I mean, it's, we read all the emails, we get all the emails, I reply to some of them, I can't reply to all of them, and, you know, with my, with my own schedule. But I just wish that there was a better way to, you know, I mentioned last time, or maybe it was Chris, having people on Zoom, and I know that's scary, but perhaps there is a way to allow, I don't know how it can be done. I know, you know, making a little video and emailing it and making a compilation, I don't know, I just wish, you know, personally, that there was a way to, I think the perception, and we're not going to change the perception, we're not going to change anyone's opinion. My opinion is mine, yours is yours, yours is yours, and we all have that right, but it's, it's, it just feels, some of the, you know, I don't want to read into tone to emails, but even in letters, there's something to be said about hearing somebody speak that versus reading it. And at the beginning, we had Kate reading emails, and she, you have a lovely way about the way in which you read the emails, but I'm sure the folks that wrote the letters, I forget what, are probably saying, you didn't emphasize that word enough or whatever. I just wish that there was a better way to capture all of what we're reading. And some things we get are in duplication, and some are just generic sort of letters that, that people kind of sign off on, and that's great. It's lovely, it's wonderful to hear from people. Like, it's wonderful, whether we agree or not. I just remember that time we had that Alice training, and I think I was the only one in the auditorium at the middle school. Would have been wonderful to have people come and hear about the plan, and I showed up with my daughter's friend's grandpa, who's wonderful, you know, and, and, and we were the only ones in the building, but you don't know if, again, can't have everyone here because we might get 100 people, we might get two people, just can't open it up right now. I just personally wish, and I just, I'm not the expert, and I know everyone is just exhausted mentally, physically.
I would say that I think this is the big problem. I mean, I've been on campus, present at two different Zoom bombings that featured racist, anti-Semitic things, full nudity, right? So we have to be really careful about that. We can't, I think, just allow open access because when you do that, that's when those things happen. So now we're looking at, we can't really allow open access. It's, it was traumatizing when it happened to us, like, really traumatizing. So you can't allow open access, so that means someone has to pre-screen, pre-filter, and I know that I don't think any of us have the time to do that, right? And I know that our staff and our teachers and our administrators don't have the time. Their focus has to be on getting school open right now.
I agree.
So perhaps maybe if things open up and go more smoothly, maybe, you know, we're, we're in a pattern, things are going well, we don't have lots of positive tests, right? It's more like a normal school year, then maybe we can, we can look at that. But I think over the next, at least month, I think it's fair to say that I don't think anyone in the schools have the bandwidth to do that. And I am personally, after having experienced that, not comfortable with not having any sort of filter. What happened was a publicly accessible sort of link that we would have to do, got circulated around the internet, and people found it, and they did some really bad things. So I would, that's my sort of personal concern. I do want to hear from people, I'm just not sure, we don't have the personnel bandwidth to do it, and I don't think we can do it in an open way. Like, if someone came in here and was naked, we would know what to do with them, right? We would call the police and arrest them. That's not how it works when it happens on Zoom, and that can be a really bad issue.
Ms. Wade?
Can I just, you know, just in between, you know, as we talk about the letters, the emails that are sent to us are public record, where can people access those? If they wanted to go on and say, because that could be, you know, somewhere, and it's a, in between, where, you know, they're there, if you want to, you know, someone, you know, feels compelled, they feel passionate about a subject, they've sent us an email, they're taking the time, you can go on and read this for the five minutes before the meeting, you know, is, where can those be found if, if they are?
They're all subject to Freedom of Information.
Okay, so someone has to specifically request those.
They would have to request them under the Freedom of Information Act.
Is there, I mean, again, like, as, it doesn't have to be decided today, or, you know, but just as we're kind of thinking out alternative options, is there a way to have those accessible rather than we're requesting those so that they can be seen? Or we, you know, that's not?
Not that I really know of.
No.
I don't know.
Is that something that could be, okay.
I mean, about that.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think about, like, you know, that kind of is a middle step of, like, I've written to the, you know, you can, you're not speaking it, but here are my words, you know, submitted with, you know, enough timeframe, you know, that they can be, you know, put out there before the meeting. Just, just a thought, as like a middle path between being, you know, bombed in the middle of a meeting versus, you know, actually actively having people here, but yet we're still, you know, you've been thoughtful and passionate enough about this topic that you want to connect and explain your position and be heard. Of course, we're reading those, I understand that, but, you know, there's a greater call for, you know, people to have, to be heard, you know, however, we want to, you know, and I understand, you know, really, our point as a committee is not to be a forum, certainly for public discussions, to get the work of the schools done, like, absolutely. But I, but I understand, you know, that we have this, you know, again, people want to have their voice out there, so, just as a thought. Again, we can revisit it the next meeting.
I think the issue right now, though, is we have to focus on opening schools. That still requires work. And I'm, I'm both knowing how the summer has gone and how the start of the year is shaping up to ask people. People have the right to send us emails, that is their right to do so, but I don't want to put additional work on school personnel at this point in time right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Noons, were you going to add something, or no?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Fair enough, and I, you know.
All right, so that is it that I have for my report. Am I also have any other matters that might not have been anticipated at the time of the agenda posted? Anything? Mr. Noons?
Yeah, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Couple of things. First and foremost, just want to thank everyone who helped out with the cadets from Allentown, Pennsylvania, being here, custodians, maintenance staff when the water pipe let go at 1:00 in the afternoon type of deal and, and such, and, you know, jumped in to get it fixed. Also, you know, all the townspeople that came out on the Monday night to, to see the show, I mean, the kids, you know, they were well received and they, you know, talking with them after. I was here all week with them, and they loved it. It was, it was great. And, you know, you were taught, Dr. Gifford was talking earlier about, you know, the testing and everything else, and these, these young men and women, you know, they're tested on a almost daily basis type of deal, you know, for COVID, and even I even had the privilege a couple of times of getting my eyeballs tickled, so, just because of being in and out with them, so. But seriously, thanks, and, you know, they enjoyed being here and look forward to coming back. I think we all got an email from Rachel Lassie on her volleyball camp, that was, that was great to see. I forgot all about that, I'll be honest, so I'm glad that went well. Mike, wonderful cameraman here tonight, may, happened to make the comment, this is his last meeting, as he's moving on to bigger and better things, and Mike, thank you for everything. You know, you can turn the camera, take a bow, you know. But thank you for that. Thank you for that. And last, and certainly not least, but I'll save the, save the best for last, we all got an email, and I'm going to get my dander up a little bit, and I'll apologize now, but we all got an email from a lady this afternoon, 118, mine arrived, type of deal, and thank you to Kate for forwarding it to me. A couple of comments that I have to make on it, you know, to the parent, you know, please understand that we can't, students between, you know, from, you know, underage 12 can't be vaccinated, so, yes, they have to wear masks, it's, it's as simple as that. More importantly, as has been discussed, we do receive them, okay, we do look at them. I got mine all, believe it or not, I have a file set up in my computer, I've got them all sitting in there, type of deal, as, as good as my computer experience is, type of deal. Kate does acknowledge them, okay, I mean, this is, "Good afternoon, I write to acknowledge, and thank you for your email, I will forward your comments to the school committee," so we get them, type of deal. No, we don't read them at the, because there could be one, there could be 50, this one's, you know, ends up being a little, about a page type of deal, okay? You know, talking about, you know, yeah, we've been, people have been on vacation, well, I haven't been on vacation this week, as I said a little bit earlier, I was up at UMass Amherst at school, okay, and got an email from the campus at 4:36 on the Monday, that said effective Wednesday, everybody's going to be wearing masks, okay? So, we all walked around Wednesday and Thursday, teaching and sitting in classes, whether you're teaching or you were a student, per se, you know, with masks on, so I do emphasize, and I do sympathize with, with teachers and the students, because I had to wear one in a classroom and teach, and also be a student, okay? And last, but certainly not least, I don't know about anybody else, but I sure as hell am not a coward. I have stood in this committee for 31 years, and I've made decisions, right, wronger and different, and I've stood my ground. So, for someone to sit here and say it is cowardly, in my opinion, is wrong, okay? These positions come up every year, and believe me when I tell you, it's a lot easier sitting out there, being a Monday morning quarterback, than sitting back here and having to make the decisions that we have to make as a committee right now, and I've had to make over the 31 years. So, think about that. With that, I rest, Madam Chair, thank you, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Ms. Amorall?
I'm just going to, first, I want to thank you, Mr. Nunes, for that. Not going to cry. I think I'm the bored crier. Thank you. I have a meme I haven't shared, because God forbid, it says something like, "School Committee," and it's a cat, like, all flustered, and it says, "I had, I did not have fun." You know, I love service to my community, but it has been a tough go.
Yes.
But I'm just going to repeat something I mentioned last week regarding the SR3 funds, and so, Mr. Kylie mentioned that SR3 funds are coming up for application, and there are stakeholder forums, and I want to applaud our district, because I've shared it on social media through the CPAC, which I currently still am chair, with that hat on. Again, a plug for anyone that wants to volunteer, I'll happily mentor you. The other districts aren't being so, I mean, they're doing it, but they're not being so forthcoming and transparent around it, but on Wednesday at 1:30 and 5:30, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council is hosting the forum for parents of students with disabilities, and so if you want to be part of that conversation, learn a little bit more about what is asked of you to, in regards to your feedback toward what might be, you know, looking for some themes, and the district is really, wants to hear from parents to inform sort of their decision-making around prioritization. So, SR3 funds relate to student attainment of skills lost, and I'm not going to, I'm not looking at the terminology, but, versus SR2 with social emotional. So, if you have anything to share, please, you can email me at the School Committee, KathleenAmorall@DartmouthSchools.org, or DartmouthCPAC@gmail.com. You can look for the Facebook page, and you can just log in, it's a webinar style, and there'll be a presentation with opportunity for feedback. So, I just encourage anyone that has something to say regarding this stakeholder to, to just register, quick, half hour, 45 minute each time, two time slots for your convenience. So, that's what I have.
And thank you for doing it.
Yeah. No, my pleasure.
Ms. Wade?
Yeah, I just, first, thank you, Mr. Nunes, very much. You know, and I just want to, you know, say that, you know, I, we are receiving a lot of emails from parents who are concerned about masks, you know, I think the pediatric advice has been very, very clear, and, you know, I keep, but I, when I'm able to respond to parents, I do tell them over and over again, please speak to your local pediatricians, and, you know, I was at Hawthorne this morning, I asked, you know, again, like, what is your advice? They said, absolutely, you know, and we're seeing more children are coming in sick, we're facing a nursing shortage, so it is really, you know, there are a lot of, it's real, and, you know, again, if, I've yet to hear from a pediatrician who is advising parents to not have their children wear masks, it's completely up with it, so, you know, it is, you know, this is a real concern.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
More importantly, if you're over 12 and you're able to, okay, get the vaccine.
Yeah, I agree.
So, thank you for that, everyone. I do want to, even though my report is done, I have now remembered one other thing I wanted to bring up with you all, and I think perhaps this might be an item that we put on the agenda for the next meeting, and that is the use of school space by outside groups. I know, the use of school space by outside groups, I know, like, I'm on the board of the DEF, and we put in a request to use school space in May, and in May, we were like, everything's great, we're going to have a normal fall, right? Let's go ahead, and I am just concerned right now about having large groups of people using our school spaces, people from outside the school, I'm not talking about students, and, you know, if you're coming in for band competition, that is part of our school activities, but I'm talking about something like the DEF, which is an outside organization, we don't have to do that here, and so I think we should have a discussion about that, sort of as a committee, about whether we want to allow for that. And so, I don't, I think, it wasn't on the agenda, so I'm not sure I want to have a full conversation now, but I think maybe we should put that on the next meeting agenda, unless anyone objects. Mr. Nunes, you have a question or comment on that?
Yeah, no, and again, you know, I think it's a wonderful idea, in all seriousness, whether we do it at the next meeting, because we've got the new teachers coming in, so that kind of extend, not that I care, but extends the meeting a little bit, so if you want to do it then, or you want to do it at the end of September, either one of those, but I, I know, I know you guys are up against a timeline, so.
Right, that's, I think, why I'd want to do it the next one.
However you want to do it, I was just, I was just thinking of, you know, with the new teachers, that's all, but I'm good with, however you want to do it, Shannon, I'm good with that.
I think, I think there are some other groups, some large events, again, these, I think were all approved before things had changed. I think this will give us a couple of weeks to see how things are going in school, and we can see if we feel comfortable with it, if we can't, I know, on our campus too, we've implemented some requirements when outside groups use our facility, like, you have to maintain a list of all the people that come, they have to, so that way we can do contact tracing, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think we just need to think about that, just so if we do have big outside groups that we're being consistent with how they're treated and what we want, or maybe we don't want them for a while, if numbers keep going up. So, let's talk about that next week, or next not week, next meeting, sorry to panic everyone. And then I'll ask Ms. Genther, did we receive any public comment during the meeting?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. So, if there are no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Our next meeting is September 11th, September 13th, I'm sorry.
13th, yes.
One, one other thing too, is September 10th, I think, Friday night is our first football game against Bishop Stank.
Okay, thank you.
So, good way to start. Madam Chair, make a motion, we adjourn.
I second that.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Amorall, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.